I call the Tuesday, July 11, 2017, work session of the Portsmouth City Council to order. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Cherry?
Here.
Mr. Clark?
Here.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Here.
Mr. Moody?
Here.
Ms. Simmons?
Here.
Dr. Whitaker? Mayor Rowe?
Here. Dr. Patton?
Thank you, sir. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of City Council, this evening, City Attorney Solomon H. Ashby, Jr., will present for your consideration various issues as they relate to the city's upcoming efforts to engage various telecommunication companies in the process of executing a franchise agreement with the city. 4G and 5G technology have been the buzzword and the subject of much legislation in the past General Assembly sessions, and we expect further efforts and changes in the future. Tonight, Mr. Ashby is returning, as you requested, to address local issues for your consideration. On January 25, 2017, the City of Portsmouth authorized the city manager to sign the use and support agreement proposed 2018 with the Southeastern Public Service Authority, better known as SIPSA. This new agreement takes effect January 25, 2018. Senior Deputy City Manager Sharon Cordell, and she is City Council's appointee to SIPSA, will provide an update to the members of council. Following the SIPSA update, Ms. Erin Tremere will provide a brief update on Waste Management and Collection Services. Mr. Ashby?
We're going to try this. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council members. Tonight, we return at your request to have you consider those issues that will impact the implementation of 4G and 5G infrastructure in the City of Portsmouth. As you know, this technology is impacting the state in all localities, so tonight is your opportunity to weigh in, in advance, of a specific request for a franchise agreement. To begin tonight, we must take note of where we are. First, the legislative landscape has changed in significant ways on July 1 of this year. You have ordained some of those changes as they relate to existing infrastructure. Conversations began months ago, testing the waters about possible implementation of the technology, and those conversations will continue and develop into agreements. Last, the impact will be felt far and wide in the city. There will be no opportunity for a NIMBY, not-in-my-backyard response. While initial efforts may be limited, the growth of facilities will continue, and every effort to implement facilities will be critical. That leads us to tonight's objectives. Tonight's objective is to obtain council's preferences and your inclinations as you consider how your franchise agreements will shape the appearance and operation of civic life and civic operations. What you say tonight will guide our staff and council as we negotiate franchise agreements in the future in conjunction with the various laws that govern such agreements. So we will discuss the issues of concern that are likely to be the subjects of discussion and negotiations, as those have been determined by my office, the city manager's office, and the Departments of Engineering, Planning, and Information and Technology. As we begin this discussion, please recognize that every issue will not be covered in this discussion. Some will have to be addressed in individual franchise agreements and the circumstances that surround them. In order to properly consider your preferences, let's review the impacts of 4G and 5G technology as we provide a franchise agreement, which is a right to access the public right-of-way to provide such technology. With the granting of such franchise agreements, we can expect the following: a pole with some variation of power connections, panel boxes, fiber and cable connection, and backhaul communication. Now, this is the technical part, so I'm going to pitch it for Mr. Daniel Jones, but in terms of backhaul communication, what we would commonly call perhaps a microwave dish or some means of conveying wireless communications. There will also be impacts, of course, the franchise agreement anticipates underground conduit in the right-of-way, and there will be broadcast transmissions that will also impact the city. Keeping those impacts in mind, let's move through to those things for your consideration. Senate Bill 1282 in 2017 acknowledged and sought to protect public safety operation needs for placing infrastructure where those infrastructure needs were required for safety operations. Public safety units also have broadcast communication needs that go hand-in-hand, and they cannot afford to have any kind of interference with their broadcast needs. We can't afford to have someone transmitting close in the same bandwidth that our public safety officials are broadcasting in, such that it creates a communication problem for our fire and safety individuals. That brings us to the first question for council. As we go forward, and we'll have a number of questions for you, does the council wish to have the city advocate for the protection of both public safety infrastructure and bandwidth needs as we go forward in negotiating franchise agreements? So that's the question for you all.
Would it be appropriate to address these one at a time during your presentation?
That's fine.
Okay. I think that's a pretty straight-up.
It's a new brainer.
Yeah. Anybody opposed to that? Okay.
The next issue is that Portsmouth has a number of partners with infrastructure and bandwidth needs in our jurisdiction. Portsmouth is a Coast Guard city and the home of 250-year-old naval shipyard and the home of a number of federal facilities that may be impacted. Second question, does council wish to have the city advocate for the protection of the public safety infrastructure and the bandwidth needs of our partners as we go forward in negotiating franchise agreements?
If you're in favor, please let me know.
Yes.
Okay.
That's national security.
Yeah.
As we consider the location of infrastructure, a number of considerations arise. One is above ground, whether infrastructure is above ground or below ground. In many respects, the city has a standard that all new facilities must be underground, no overhead wires. The question there is, does the council wish to advocate for the placement of all new facilities to remain underground?
Yes. Yes. The answer is yes.
Franchise?
Hold on. Councilman Vitti?
On all of these, are we assuming that the state is going to allow us to do this, since we're a Dillon-ruled state? Do we have that authority now?
We are, the position is that we are going to press these issues as far as the law allows. I will tell you that even as we are addressing these issues now, we do expect some tinkering on the edges perhaps next legislative session, but as I said early on, we are getting your feedback and your preferences so that we go and negotiate these matters to the fullest extent possible in those negotiations. If there is an issue, if there is a legal impediment, of course, we're going to have to honor the law, but what we want to be able to do is to bring back to you, as well as to be consistent across the board, so as not to be arbitrary or discriminatory, bring back a consistent product that honors the decisions of the governing body.
Who will the negotiations be with?
Typically, those come through either the permits, they will come through, they will be addressed by the departments I mentioned, engineering because of the right-of-way, the legal department. There may be planning issues, and there will be technology issues that have to also be addressed, so it will be collaborative, but the agreements will be negotiated out of my office.
But we're assuming that the state is going to allow us to cut our own agreements?
Certainly.
Is that what this is?
Certainly. The Constitution allows us to enter into those franchise agreements.
In fact, it requires us, I mean, for anything greater than 15 years.
Correct.
And Bill, I think I sense concern, and that is my concern. I think what the General Assembly is trying to do is take away any regulatory authority that we may have in regulating 5G. It happened with cable TV back in the early '70s. Your franchise agreement could be that thick. Now, it's much, much thinner.
Yep. That's my concern, and do we need to put these things in our legislative package?
I would say, and I don't see Ms. Neal here, I would say yes, because as of today, and I have not looked at all of the details, Ms. Neal did send out a flyer today, these issues are in front of the legislature again for this session, so we do have a need to protect our current authorities.
Thank you, Bill.
Let me go now with regard to right-of-ways. Franchise agreements-
We didn't address above or below ground.
Excuse me, above or below ground?
Below.
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 Frank? Below ground. Franchise agreements largely address the city's right-of-way, however they can incorporate, of course, features that address, that can be incorporated on public land and private land. You'll recall in our discussion, there can be facilities placed on actual buildings that might be adjacent to the right-of-way. So the question is, does council have, wish to advocate, a placement of infrastructure that would be required above ground on the right-of-way, on the private property adjacent to the right-of-way, on public land? Now, I know that's sort of a broad question, but think of High Street. I think we had the discussion, do we have the picket fence down High Street? Do we have elements, boxes on the buildings along High Street? Do we have the lamp poles? Or is there a preference?
Okay. Yes, sir.
When you say private lands, are you speaking of individual property owners?
Yes.
So where are we in that negotiation as far as, how would the city impose on private property?
We wouldn't, and we wouldn't impose what we would do in our discussion if the city's preference is not to have a picket fence running down the right-of-way. We would simply, in those negotiations, say, we would prefer that you co-locate on buildings and adjacent poles and existing poles, as opposed to placing new poles down the right-of-way. Now, then, at that point, the company has to, to the extent, negotiate with the private landowners in terms of trying to accomplish that.
So you're saying right-of-ways on private property, is that what you're speaking to?
Correct. We control the right-of-way. The private land is the land adjacent, the owners adjacent to the right-of-way, and so they would have to negotiate with them if they were going to place facilities on those private properties.
So you're talking about, like, Maryview Hospital has a lot of frontage on High Street?
Right.
So, poles on the right-of-way, poles on their property, or poles on their building? Is that what we're saying?
Correct. If you think of a panel box, if you think of a panel box, if it's a pole, it could be dead center in the median on High, it could be lamp pole on the sidewalk, or it could be a box on Roger Brown. And so the question is, is the city's preference to have it within our right-of-way, which is the sidewalk or the street, or we'd prefer to have them attached to the buildings and out of the public domain?
Definitely out of the public domain.
Okay. Yes, sir.
So what about a street where you have a public sidewalk in front of a private property? Are you saying that right-of-way that is adjacent to the street, that the franchise agreement would allow for placement of some type of communication device in that right-of-way area without the owner's consent?
Yes, because, and I'm looking to Mr. Wright to make sure I'm correct, the right-of-way extends, in most cases, up to the facade or just outside of the facade?
Good evening. It's difficult to determine actually where the right-of-way is without a survey, but as a general rule, in most of your residential areas, the right-of-way is the back of the sidewalk. Typically, your telephone poles and utility poles are a good indication of where the right-of-way line is, just in general.
And really, if I understand the question correctly, it's a preference of whether or not we want new structure, infrastructure, either in our right-of-way or on private property?
Correct.
And the right-of-way could be the median strip, it could be the pavement, it could be the sidewalk, it could be a grassy area that falls within the right-of-way.
Correct.
And so the issue is, any new structure?
It depends.
Okay. We've got a depends, we've got-
I mean, if we have the right to be able to do it, yes. If we don't, then if we're going to have to seek any, you know, questions from public people, then we'd need to be able to get, I mean, I don't see us imposing on anybody's private property.
It wouldn't be us, it would be the 5G, they would have to-
They'd get their authority.
Yeah. They'd have to negotiate with each individual property owner for permission.
Correct.
And it'd be a separate deal that we would not be a part of, but we might be able to regulate it through zoning.
It may be an issue of zoning if it's on private land, correct.
So, I mean, I wouldn't want to be intrusive. I wouldn't want it to be a sore thumb. I would want it to be-
Okay, Bill?
Well, if we're leaving it up to individual property owners, potentially, how would that affect the good of the whole?
In terms, well, that is part of the negotiation. Certainly, the company has their interests, the city is, has a civic interest, and what you're trying to do in terms of those negotiations is accomplish the objective that we have to accomplish by law, and so there may be some back and forth. Again, these are sort of starting points. It may not be accomplished completely one way or another. There may be some give and take. So for instance, we may be able to convince someone to utilize, and there may be citizens willing to do it for a certain length of a particular street, and then it has to change. So there are going to be decisions made. What we're trying to do is get the council's preference so we have that starting point for the various areas, and as I'm going through this, when we get to the next side, you'll see, there's some other shades to this question as we go from different, go into different areas.
About existing utility poles in the right-of-way area?
That is a discussion, you'll see a couple of slides, there's a discussion about co-location, and I'll address that right now. Certainly, the city's preference is that you co-locate, if at all possible.
Sure.
In the early discussions that we've had, some companies are more than willing to co-locate or have arrangements to co-locate on existing poles of various sort. Some may not, and so we're going to talk a little bit about co-location in a slide or two going forward, and I'm going to ask you precisely that question, would you prefer to co-locate? But as Mr. Baldwin would tell you, co-location, as a pure definition, means placing it on a pole or on a building, as opposed to erecting a new structure.
All right. Let's hear from this side. What is your preference?
Well, the preference, well, like you said, we haven't got it yet, but the co-locating, that would be a preference if it was a utility pole there, but I understand it's got to be a combination at some point. I would like to see it, you know, the possibility of doing it on the private properties as a panel box, something that's going to be less obvious, as opposed to putting new poles every 50 feet down the street. So I understand that it might be places in the city that there are no buildings, and so the only option will be, so I think eventually it's going to have to be a combination, and it's going to have to be looked at in each area differently. But my opinion would be to co-location for the private, you know, properties when possible, and then we'd have to visit when that's not an option.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yeah, I agree with the co-location, if it's on private property with the present existence of, like, what is it, the utility boxes, the cable boxes, if those things can be utilized. But if I heard Mr. Jones correctly, the distance that these transponders and stuff would have to be, would it be sufficient if the lamp posts are used? Would that be the distance necessary, or do they have to be closer?
We're going to address that in a future slide. Unfortunately, we're going to have to have those conversations with the companies to address that. I think Mr. Jones can address it, as he said in a meeting we had. Technically, there's a distance if there's nothing else interfering, meaning no microwave in between, but that is so nebulous to think that's a situation here in the City of Portsmouth. We're probably going to have to hear from the actual providers to know what the distances are going to be before we have that situation. So that's why I say to you all, some situations, and when we get to a couple of slides in, we're going to see, some situations we're going to have to address as the situation comes up, because I would submit to you that the first company that comes in is going to be a different situation than perhaps the third or the fourth, because it's like moving into a subdivision. If you're the first house there, you know, your view is everything. If you're the third or fourth house, your view is getting cut down, so some of the things are going to be agreement-specific and technology-specific for that particular company.
Paige?
What's the size of this technology?
We haven't heard from her. Can we hold up just for one second and get Paige?
Yeah.
He hasn't spoken.
No. I haven't had it. Co-location, of course, is optimal if things are already there, but pass that on the building. But if we're going to regulate this through zoning, wouldn't we get the opportunity to, if we do it that way, to chime in on it at that point and say, is that going to be possible, Mr. Baldwin? Because there may be situations where this is better than that, and if we're going to have the opportunity to regulate through zoning and go through a process of planning and then coming here, or however that works, then maybe we can forego some of this discussion because there may be case-by-case anyway.
Good evening. Just very briefly, the question of co-locating. Under the current zoning, and it's a provision we would expect to continue in the new zoning code, co-locations by utility companies such as this for cell service is a by-right use. It's a preferred instead of putting up poles, and so we've been using that as an encouragement. Now, typically speaking, that's been putting larger facilities on water tanks or, you know, other larger buildings, but under this type of a deployment, this would also work as well, it would be a by-right use for co-location. So if they put it on top of a building or attach to a building, we'd want to go back at some point, take a look at screening requirements. We started to get, you know, a large number of these. We haven't really had these on, you know, individual structures. We might want to look at how you would go about, you know, trying to camouflage the units if they're large or obtrusive, and I know the city attorney's going to get into some issues in the historic districts as well. But generally speaking, we use co-locating as an encouragement to avoid the proliferation of more poles.
So for knowing that it's coming, would not be prudent for council to give some direction to management or you, from a planning perspective, to go back and look at those things so we have those in place, because we know it's coming? So we're prepared, or you are looking at it?
We have been discussing it, you know, we are looking at it. We haven't gotten to the point of a code amendment, we are looking at it. Some of it we'll have to look at, whatever kind of preemption we're afraid that the state's going to do, you know, limiting whatever authority, but it is something we're looking at.
Yeah. So what about the additional regulations for zoning for private property versus right-of-way coming in, coming in with a permit, with a request? One is for the right-of-way, one is for private property?
Right, and that's a part that's going to be a challenge for providers when they come into town, as we've discussed before. Our zoning authority runs up to the right-of-way line, the right-of-way is separately regulated by Chapter 32 of the city code. Some providers, we've discussed here, might be working back and forth, they might be in the right-of-way for a few other facilities, they might end up on private property for others, and that's just something we'll have to work through in the permitting process as they do that. So you're, back to your point, I think what you're going to see is a variety of installations to accommodate a run of-
Which means we can't answer these questions. We can't give an answer right now, it's going to fit all the situations that's going to come forward.
You can have a preference.
And that's why we're asking for some preference.
What we have now with the co-location, but knowing that that's not always going to be feasible or the best way to go.
Certainly, certainly.
Bill?
Well, you know, a big part of that is, what is the appearance of the technology, the boxes, if you may?
Sure.
Do we know that at this point?
No.
So is that, to me, that's a factor?
Appearance.
And let me, let me just give you some semblance, and I'm going to look to all of my technical folks. When these issues roll out, we will have plans that will address some of the appearance issues, so we'll have some understanding, but there's some discussion later in this presentation that addresses a little bit of the appearance, at least theoretically, and that's what I want you all to at least chime in on or give some thought to. You don't have to answer every question tonight, there may be some things you want to think about and ponder now that we've raised these questions, but it'll give you an opportunity to ponder some of these issues as we go forward. But understand, because these are going to be so ubiquitous, that's why we're asking these questions now, so you give them some thought, and if there's a scenario that comes to your mind, we can think about it. Certainly, as the Vice Mayor has said, some of these are going to be poles, some of these may be towers, and if it's a tower situation, what I would call a tower, or a very large pole, they will come out sort of individually in a use permit or some other situation, so there will be some particular attention paid to them. What we're saying now is, as the company comes, we are trying to drive the discussion in a particular direction that best fits our community, so that they are aware of our needs.
Elizabeth had her hand up, if you, and, yeah.
I'm just trying to picture, you're talking about runs. If we left here and we went down High Street and we crossed the Churchill Bridge on the left-hand side, if there was a run on the left-hand side all the way to Tarnick Road, you'd be going through the backyards of some houses, then the front yard of houses, and then a church, and then more houses, and then a, you know, an industrial building, basically, you know, a home, and then the shopping center where the Kroger used to be. I mean, you're not going to, there's no one-size-fits-all for those, you know, what you want in front of the houses is not the same thing that you want in front of the produce place, necessarily, or maybe the shopping center. I mean, and the whole city's like that. You go 12 blocks, it changes.
Dr. Patton?
One of the things we discussed today, members of council, is right now, we have counted, there are five different entities that we may be working with, or we will be working with, and what they want may be different for all five, but what we do know, as the city attorney and the team has said to me, it's not going to be us, you all, being able to say, we aren't going to approve it, or we're not going to go along with it. It's something we're going to have to deal with, and it's not going to go away, and it's going to be intense. That's why we're trying to get ahead of it.
To my colleagues, is it fair to summarize this discussion as saying, co-location is our preference, and where it cannot be co-located, if it goes on private property, that we reserve the right to control it in some planning fashion?
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, and it does matter, if it's something the size of that lectern, or something the size of the big green utility box, that makes a difference.
The size versus the lectern.
Yes.
Or a great big dish the size of the screen.
Yeah.
And so it depends, and is-
So my first answer, it depends, was the right answer.
Right. And we understand that, and that's why we're trying to put at least some scenarios so that we can answer some questions about concerns, because these issues are going to start in a particular place, they're not going to start all over the city, but it gives us a chance to start these discussions, and I'm going to, for lack of time, I'm going to move rather swiftly through these. We have, of course, civic partners, civic leagues, school board, who all, I don't say own property, but have an interest in property within our jurisdiction. And I'm going to, for lack of time, I'm going to move rather swiftly through these. We have, of course, civic partners, Civic Lees, School Board, who all, I don't say own property, but have an interest in property within our jurisdiction. Civic Lees, School Board, P-R-H-A-V dot. Again, that issue becomes location within the property associated with those civic partners. Dr. Whitaker mentioned, does an owner control whether or not it goes on the sidewalk in front of their home? Not if it's the city property, but the question is, would the city want a telecommunications company to engage with our civic partners about a, either a preferred location, an alternative location, or at least engage them in terms of what they're trying to do in advance? And that's something we certainly do on the zoning side, but that's the question for council. Do you, would you have us advocate that they at least engage the partners either for alternative location on land that they may be associated with, or at least a discussion with them if they're considering locating in areas associated with those folks?
We just need to be, to zone and have it in the process as much as we can for those persons who own property here but don't live here and won't give a hoot where it is or what it looks like. That's why we need to be in the process and have you advocate for our preferences because, you know, if they're absentee owner who lives seven states away, they're not going to have the same concern as the person who lives next door or us who got a ride down the street and sit every day.
Sure.
That's why we need to make sure this is as tight as we can get it.
Of course, we have historic districts. That is something you all may want to consider. As Mr. Baldwin said, we do have issues with regard to trying to screen things that may not necessarily fit the historic district and some of our historic districts. So there may be some issues with trying to get some of these infrastructures if they're woefully out of line with the district, trying to get some kind of masking that might fit the district, so that's one issue. You all have talked about the co-location issue, and of course, we have the issue with regard to sidewalks protecting existing uses. If you, yes, sir?
How do we regulate satellite dishes now?
I believe federal law does not allow us to regulate a dish TV dish.
Because I see them on houses, I see them on roofs, I see them on the side of houses. I know of some instances where they're in the front yards now.
I don't disagree with you, Councilman. The question is, if we can, do you have a preference?
Yes.
And understanding that, as you all have said, it depends on what it looks like. If it's a silver bullet or a silver ball sitting in the wrong place, it may be an issue. So that's why we have listed that as, at least as a consideration as we talk to folks and say, if you're going to start in this area, please understand this is a historic district. Give that some consideration as you look at infrastructure. And then we have, of course, to protect the uses, as you all have said. If we do co-locate, if we put four panel boxes, four juncture boxes and power poles and three dishes on a pole, we may have some pedestrian issues in terms of folks being able to walk back and forth. So those are also issues we're going to have to protect against. State law has required that these agreements be 10 years with three, five-year extensions, as we talked about before. Pole placement and spacing is something we're going to have to have an individual discussion about with the companies in terms of their technology, and we just put that piece in their appearance because we knew that would be an issue and that had been an issue before. And again, the placement and spacing is really some unique features that are tied to technical requirements that we'll address with those companies as we go forward. Any additional issues that you all can think of now, or if you have additional issues, we can certainly take those up as we go forward.
I'm just curious. I don't know if this has been researched, but what is the tax implication for the state as far as revenue versus what's the tax implication for the city of Portsmouth? Is there an expected revenue that we're going to gain from this versus what the state is going to gain?
I'll have to look and see if there was a tax impact on the original 1282 legislation. There may have been a tax impact study on that legislation. Off the top of my head, I don't remember whether or not there was some tax impact language on that, but that would, that would have been associated with that original legislation, but I can send you whatever was associated with that original legislation.
Well, the reason I was curious is because if it's a, if it's a revenue implication for the state, I doubt that they're going to give the localities that much authority. If it's a significant revenue issue for the state, then that's going to, that may be an issue as far as how much we can do.
I will tell you that some of the discussion has been about trying to be uniform and make it streamlined in the process. Now, I won't tell you that that's the only reason, but that's one of the stated reasons in terms of trying to address these particular issues.
But do we know, is there a revenue opportunity for the city with this?
We are not certain. We don't have that information, and we'll get back with you researching.
Next steps, of course, as we get specific proposals based on what you all have provided, we will certainly be bringing those particular issues back to you all for discussion as the companies come forward with individual issues.
You had a question?
I have, I have one more concern. One more concern. Was there no mention of any higher education centers like our TCC or any private businesses that may be using 4G? Was that taken into any consideration?
Some of the discussion is about providing additional services to localities. The question is the rollout. When will that happen and whether or not it will cover an entire locality? So there's a bit of a debate as to whether or not it will, in fact, cover the entire locality, because this is expected to be phased in, so there's a bit of a question mark. It will start. There's some expectation it will start in perhaps 90 days or less, but the question is, how far will it reach and how fast?
Follow-up on Councilman Whitaker's question. I know when cable first came into the region as franchise agreements were signed, there were a lot of money made off of those agreements for a short period of time anyway, until the state decided to usurp that authority. So we don't know at this point who's going to make the bucks off of this. Somebody was going to make some money off of this.
For one, the companies.
Yeah.
On cable TV, the franchise fee was regulated by the FCC, and primarily that went to the local government, and then the state started nibbling on their ability to get that fee. So I think to address your question, I think to the greatest extent possible, any in-kind service that we can get for them, certainly, you know, 4G service for school would make a lot of sense or for TCC.
And so when we get to specific issues of fees and those sorts of things, certainly we're bringing those back to you all in terms of what the issues are, as well as as much information and reconnaissance we can with regard to what other cities are doing and what they have done, so we know what those issues are.
So just curious, I know that the rental fees that the city receives for some of the equipment, but there are no property or equipment tax that are assessed on those telecommunications?
Not on the real estate side. There may be on personal property.
On the businesses pay a personal property on that equipment.
Business personal property, is there?
And machine and tool tax, is that included by the FCC or by the state?
I'm not sure whether they, whether they fall under that or not.
That's a good question. Can you all check on that?
I will.
With the whole issue of the economics.
Yes, we shall.
It would seem to me that the naval shipyard, hospital, and coast guard base would be having this ahead of us from a security standpoint. Do we know when they're, if they already have it or when they're getting it? I think that's an important question.
We will check.
We'll check.
All right. Any other comments, questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Cordell? Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. I am your SIPSA-appointed representative, and typically I provide a written summary of every board meeting after, board meeting, and the last summary I provided was regarding the May board meeting, and I understand I was asked to come before council to report about the June board meeting that just passed on June 28th. I'm available to answer any questions you may have, but I thought I would start off giving you some highlights from the SIPSA FY 2018 budget that was recently adopted. The budget maintains the municipal tipping fee at $125 a ton through January 24th, 2018, and that is the final day of SIPSA's waste disposal contract with Wheel Abraer. The budget reflects a projected reduction to $85 a ton effective January 25th, 2018. Now, this is higher than the anticipated $65 a ton that was projected with Repower, and what that takes into consideration is the remediation costs of the leachate problem at the landfill. But what I'm pleased to report is that as of the June 28th board meeting, SIPSA reported that the remediation out of the landfill has gone so well that we are going to be able to stop the pumping and hauling quite a lot sooner than expected. So the cost is no longer the $85 tipping fee. We're now back down to 65. That number is tentative, and it is tentative because it is subject to the board deciding on what the long-term solution is going to be to handle the leachate out at the landfill. We are going to have to put in a new leachate monitoring system, and also there's going to be a significant capital expense that's going to go along with that. And then also, HRSD, which takes the leachate, which is essentially moisture that comes through the landfill and it becomes contaminated water, HRSD takes that from the landfill, but it has to be treated. It has to be a certain concentration, and so there will be a cost that's also associated with getting that water to the appropriate concentration for HRSD to take it. But as it stands now, SIPSA reports that the tipping fee should be at approximately $65 a ton, and we anticipate there being a revised budget at the end of the summer presented to the board with those numbers. Now, there's also been some leadership changes at SIPSA. As many of you know, Roland Bucky Taylor, he is retiring at the end of the month, so currently the board has engaged a search form to go ahead and find a new SIPSA executive director. That is currently underway. In addition, the current chair, Marley Woodall, who's the governor's appointee for the city of Chesapeake, his term is expiring, and so he will be cycling off of the board. At the June meeting, a new slate of officers was presented, and I'm very pleased to report that John Kifer, the governor's appointee from Norfolk, was presented on the slate to be the new chair, and as well as Luke McCoy. He is presented on the slate to be the new vice chair of the SIPSA board, and so that will be up for a vote at the board meeting on July 26th. Also, I would expect that at the, when the new budget is proposed at the end of the summer, we're going to have not only the solution for the long-term treatment of the leachate, we're also going to have presented in that budget municipal waste options to be implemented as of January 25th, 2018, pending until Repower comes online, because Repower is not going to be ready to go on January 25th, 2018. Turning to Repower. Repower, as I previously advised council in written form, has yet to obtain an executed offtake agreement for the sale of fuel pellets, which is integral for it to be able to get financing for the project. Yes, sir?
Is the modifier for agreement offtake, did you say?
Yes, it's called an offtake agreement. What Repower proposed to do is take the municipal solid waste, separate out the recyclables, and they're going to turn those recyclables into a fuel pellet that it intends to sell on the open market. But part of being able to do that is getting an agreement for someone to actually buy those fuel pellets. It was anticipated in the presentation to SIPSA that that offtake agreement would be completed in January of 2018. To date, it's not complete. And so they don't have financing, and so they are unable to start construction of the project. As I reported to you previously, in April, there was a motion made by the governor's appointee from Virginia Beach to terminate the waste supply agreement with Repower. It was a surprise, but every month that we come to meet, we get an update. And February, the agreement hadn't been executed. March, the agreement hadn't been executed. April, this motion was made, and as I advised council, I, along with Luke McCoy, voted to terminate the contract with Repower. We were one vote short. The other localities that voted to terminate were Norfolk, Suffolk, Virginia Beach. Since then, I'm sorry, Chesapeake did not vote to terminate. They voted to continue. It was Chesapeake, Isle of Wight, Franklin, and Southampton County, and we needed a supermajority in order for that vote to pass, and we were one vote short. Repower executive staff has come to meetings and stated numerous times that they're close to finalizing the offtake agreement, but to date, I have no information that it's been I am advised, as of the last meeting in June, that the governor's appointee from Virginia Beach will be making the same motion at the July meeting, and I would be very grateful for any input from council as to how you would like for me to vote.
Okay, let's stop.
Same way.
Yep.
Yes.
Good.
Yes, sir.
Question. If the offtake agreement is voted down, what would be the impact on Portsmouth?
If Repower is out, well, at this point, that would mean that SIPSA would have to either reissue bids, but we also still have the landfill. We still have the landfill to use in the interim. That's always been considered kind of Plan B, to go straight to the landfill, but we would have to reissue an RFP and see who comes to the table with some proposals.
Just so that we're clear on the tipping fee issue, I'd asked, and I see it's a PowerPoint that was included. I asked about the different curbside services, the black trash can, the blue trash can, and the bulk. When citizens hear you speaking about the $85, $65 per ton tipping fee, that is referring to which pickup?
I would have to defer to Ms. Tremere on that. That involves...
Black cans?
That's the, that's the black can.
It's my understanding that when Repower comes on, though, that's, they take everything.
Okay.
But yes, I would, I'll defer to the black can.
So my question, you mentioned that it is now down to $65 per ton.
Yes, sir.
However, there's going to be a significant capital expense to handle the leachate issue?
Yes, but we have it in the FY 2018 budget. There's $9.5 million that SIPSA does have in order, have budgeted to go ahead and deal with the leachate issue, but it's tentative because it hasn't yet been adopted. That's why I'm, I don't want to sit here and say for sure it's $65. That's not the information that I've been given. Right now, we're tentatively at $65 a ton.
That tentative amount includes the $9 million expense?
That's, yes, that's in the FY 2018 budget. That's already set aside for capital expenditures.
Okay. And so with the SIPSA, with the SIPSA arrangement, we're using SIPSA presently for... for all of the trash pickup, the black can, the recycle, and the bulk pickup?
No, we're not, but we're going to present that right after she finishes, we have a presentation on the cans.
I know, but the reason I'm asking is because I have a question that I want to-
Just for the black can?
Okay, just for the black can.
The blue can goes to a different place?
Okay, so, the black can pickup, right. So, now, if that's what SIPSA is responsible for legally, what prevents the city of Portsmouth legally from negotiating directly with a vendor for pickup other than SIPSA? Is there any type of legal implication that keeps the city from negotiating directly for these services?
Yes.
And what is that?
The city signed a use and support agreement for post-2018 services. There is a contract that's been signed. There is an early termination provision, but it would require that the city, first of all, go with SIPSA for at least two years and then provide notice, and then there would have to be a payment. And there's an entire calculation set out in the contract that the city would have to pay in one single lump sum in order to kind of buy itself out of SIPSA.
So, when did we enter into that use and support agreement that now ties us, binds us into that?
January. January.
This past January?
Yes.
January 25th.
Okay. Yep.
That, you had mentioned the leachate problem and expense, that's kind of an open-ended thing, so we really don't know what we're facing until we get down the road. And the monitoring system, you said they have to put a monitoring system in. Leachate's not a new problem, so they've been operating without a monitoring system?
It was outdated. They needed something more, more, more modern. And leachate, yeah, it's always going to be a problem at any landfill, but I'm pleased to say that the pumping and hauling has gone much better than expected. We had expected to have to do two more additional 150-day cycles of pumping and hauling. That's not going to be necessary in order to get us down to the level that DEQ requires.
Is the exposure divided equally among the members, or is it predicated on the tonnage of each member?
No, everything is, everything is equal. There's nothing, nothing that, nothing with regard to tonnage. And the premise of SIPSA post-2018 is that everything is equal, everyone's paying the same. So, $65 a ton, everyone's paying $65 a ton, whereas that was not the case prior to 2018.
I think that was my question, too. I was trying to figure out, of the $9 million, how was it going to be divided among the seven cities, but $65 per ton?
Well, the $9.5 million is just what SIPSA has set aside for its capital expenditures in FY 2018, so, you know, it's going to be used to, you know, deal with the leachate issue of putting in a new monitoring system, as well as other capital expenditures. It's not really divided amongst the cities, it's just to take care of whatever capital expenditures are needed for SIPSA.
Dr. Pat.
And I think one of the things that Mrs. Cordell has kept us surprised, that initially, when we heard the word and the issue leachate, it was projected as it was terrible. Her report back and the findings, and the engineers and the study have found that it is not as bad as projected when we first started hearing this, and that they are in a better position of managing and monitoring.
Yes, sir.
Just, what was the benefit of the city entering into the 2000, January 25th, 2017 agreement? What was the benefit of doing that?
Well, SIPSA provides a number of different services. In addition to municipal solid waste disposal, they also handle hazardous waste disposal. They also handle when there are hurricanes and you've got the bulk trees and things down like that, they're going to come out and pick up all that debris. There are a number of kind of smaller services that SIPSA provides that you'd have to subcontract out if you were just going to just, someone just taking your trash and taking it to a landfill. There's another, there's a lot of other little things that need to get done.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
They're little, but they're big.
Mm-hmm. Very big in the city.
Turning to another issue for SIPSA post-2018, the transfer station. We've talked about that numerous times. Portsmouth does not have a transfer station, and currently Wheel Obrator serves as our transfer station and is also where our trash is burned. Wheel Obrator has been awarded the solid waste hauling and disposal contract for waste services for non-municipal waste received at all SIPSA transfer stations. And after that, SIPSA has begun discussions with Wheel Obrator to add an addendum to that particular contract, providing that Portsmouth will use the Wheel Obrator facility as a transfer station, and Wheel Obrator will then go ahead and incinerate all of Portsmouth's trash, as it currently does. If those negotiations are successful, it's going to negate the need for Portsmouth to incur additional transportation costs in taking its trash to either the Chesapeake transfer station or the Norfolk transfer station. So, that's currently being negotiated. So, that would really mean there's no change for the way we handle our trash here in Portsmouth. It would be trucked to Wheel Obrator if those negotiations are successful. So, I am aware that they are ongoing. Anyone have any additional questions?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mrs. Tremere will come forward. About enough they don't manage waste management collection.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor.
Contenders.
City Council. A couple of your questions have already been answered from my PowerPoint, but this will be pretty short. The most visible service provided by the Division of Waste Management is curbside collection of waste. The collection of municipal solid waste, or more commonly referred to household waste, is provided on a weekly schedule by the city of Portsmouth. This waste is collected and disposed of at a SIPSA facility. In addition to the collection of municipal solid waste, the Division of Waste Management also provides yard waste and bulk collection on a weekly basis. These items are collected on the same day as the regularly scheduled household collection. Yard waste and tree debris is delivered to the city's landfill for disposal. For disposal of bulk and single-stream recycling materials, the city currently contracts with Recycling and Disposal Services, or RDS. Bulk recycling items consist of large items such as furniture, appliances, and household construction debris, not generated by a contractor. In addition to this, in addition, the city of Portsmouth Division of Waste Management provides curbside collection of single-stream recycling on a bi-weekly schedule. Single-stream recycling refers to a system in which paper, plastics, and metals are mixed in a collection receptacle instead of being sorted by the citizen prior to pickup. As previously mentioned, these items are also delivered by the Division of Waste Management to the RDS facility. The Division of Waste Management provides these services Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday, with Wednesdays off. And information pertaining to the collection schedule specific to subdivisions is available on the city of Portsmouth Public Utility website.
So, the, so the city trucks pick up the recyclable and the bulk and then transfer to RDS, or does RDS pick it up?
We do all collection.
Okay.
And the goal, the goal was that by having these services by RDS, that reduces the amount of tonnage that goes into the black trash cans, and therefore reduces the tipping fee that the city has to pay?
Correct. It reduces the operational expenses because we're avoiding the $125 a ton charge for the tipping fee to SIPSA. So, the materials that are collected and taken to RDS don't go to SIPSA.
So, you say you're avoiding the $125, or are you reducing the amount of tonnage?
It's the same thing. We reduce the tonnage that we send to SIPSA, therefore, we're not paying the $125 a ton. If we, if what we took for recycling, we picked up and we delivered to SIPSA instead of RDS, we'd be paying SIPSA $125 a ton.
The answer is yes.
Yes.
The answer is yes.
Bill.
Where, where does our tree debris go?
To the city-owned landfill.
What do we do with it?
We bury it.
Okay, we're burying tree debris in the landfill. Wow, it looks like to me that would fill up the landfill much faster because that tree debris is going to be there for-
Well, all of the yard waste and tree debris is collected and taken to the city landfill. So, the other option would be to collect it and deliver it to SIPSA at the moment.
Or to somebody that could process it. I would think that we would take a look at doing that versus, what's the life expectancy of our landfill now?
Over 100 years.
100 years.
In the cells that are currently permitted.
Well, whatever it is, the putting bulk, burying tree debris is going to fill it up faster. So, we might want to take a look at that.
Let's not leave Bill's question.
No, I was going to say, I thought you were going to say something.
My, as my colleagues, I think what I'm hearing Bill saying, let's ask the city manager to look at the feasibility of grinding up.
And it is being grinded.
Well, we do grind it.
It's grinded.
So, we have, we have a grinder out there so that the trees get grounded, put in, so it reduces the amount of volume that we are using for our landfill.
We're not burying whole trees.
But, but still, that's, that's a lot of bulk.
We'll get a report.
Yeah, see if it's a market for it.
Yeah.
Would be my suggestion.
Anybody want to?
I have a question.
Oh, sure.
Let's make sure that we have a consensus, okay?
Oh, yes.
All right.
Yes.
I guess, one presentation you gave before, you talked about, and I don't know if this is Dr. Whitaker's question, about there were some scales that trucks would go on and they would weigh, and then they would pay us versus the tipping fee that we want to reduce that we pay SIPSA.
No, so, this, our landfill is closed to outside contractors. Only Portsmouth uses our landfill. The scales are being reinstalled, they're out to bid right now, and I believe the bid opening is July 26th. And that is to help us monitor the amount of material that goes into our landfill, so.
Which, which helps with our reports to DEQ.
Right.
So, how are we, how are we monitoring that only Portsmouth vendors are using our landfill?
So, our, our landfill is staffed during operations, so there's somebody there. Obviously, the city vehicles are labeled as city vehicles. If you are an outside contractor working for the city of Portsmouth, you have to submit a written request to me with the appropriate, you know, if you're bringing soils, you have to have the soil test, you've got to tell me where you're working, the duration of your project, about how much material you're going to be, and then upon my approval, I give that to the landfill manager, and he has that information. So, if you're not on that list, you don't get to come in.
And we now have an operating scale at the landfill?
We don't, it's out to bid right now, and the bid opening is July 26th.
Are we still utilizing goats to do the grass cutting?
We've purchased the appropriate.
So, we're doing that?
There are only how many goats left? Only two goats are left out of how many?
Started with 10.
The coyotes, over the years, have whatever.
Coyotes out there?
Coyote, yeah, yeah. I've seen them since I've been, I've seen, I've seen them myself as I've been out there. So, there are. And at, excuse me, Mayor, by me, at Cranny Allen, we were over there, they talked about all of the wilderness that's out in that area and other wildlife.
Okay.
Okay, Mayor, we've finished, please.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, we have eight city manager reports tonight for your consideration. We have the Home Investment Partnership Program income, which is an ordinance which is accepting $43,758.30 of home investment partnership program income, and this amount of money would be appropriating said amount to the FY Community Planning and Development Program Fund. The PRJ does no longer have an existing rehab program. However, those who are part of the rehab program and have loans, they are responsible for paying back that which they have received through that program for rehab. So, this is money that is a result of a payback for a rehab loan through the home program. The second is establishing an arts and cultural district in Portsmouth. We presented to you through Mrs. Perry at our last June 26th Public Works meeting, public work session, and the Portsmouth Museum and Fine Arts Commission has worked approximately two years on the development of the proposal for an arts and cultural district within the city's downtown and surrounding area. The next is the 2016 Portsmouth Adult Drug Treatment Court grant, and it will be an adoption of an ordinance accepting a grant funding for the amount of $165,000 to the, from the Office of the Executive Secretary of the Supreme Court of Virginia, and these appropriating said funds in FY 2018 grant funds to use by the Third Judicial Circuit Court for Portsmouth. This program has been in place and led by Judge Johnny Morrison since 2000. The next is an employment of temporary assistance for needy families, which is tanned participants, and this is an adoption of an ordinance accepting an employment for tanned participant grants in the amount of $122,269 from the Virginia Department of Social Services, and appropriating said funds in the FY 2018 Social Service Fund. This particular grant will allow social service to work with approximately 120 participants who did not qualify, do not qualify for the VIEW program, and this is to work with persons who are, we're trying to build job skills for job placement and to support transportation, also help with reading and math skills. The next is a, the acceptance of a grant from the Port of Virginia for the Portside Project, and that will be adoption of an ordinance accepting a grant in the amount of $109,650 from the Port of Virginia, which we talked about several times and presented last night in Portside. The next, it is acceptance of a grant from the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality for a water quality project, and this ordinance is accepting $381,207 from the Stormwater Local Assistance Fund administered by the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality, and appropriating said amount in the stormwater category of the FY 28 Capital Improvement Program for Water Quality Projects. The next is granting of an easement to Dominion Energy at the Sportsplex Gymnasium. An adoption of this resolution is authorizing the city manager to execute a deed of easement to the Virginia Electric and Power Company, and Dominion Energy Virginia in submarine property owned by the city of Portsmouth, and having a street address of 1801 Portsmouth Boulevard for the purpose of constructing, operating, and maintaining a pole line. The current pole line, Dominion is desirous of installing a three-pole mounted transformer at the Sportsplex Gym, and the Sportsplex Gym is currently under renovation, and the building pole that we have right now is a single-phase. So, it will go to a three-phase power is required for the electrical upgrades necessary for the renovations. The next is the adoption of a resolution approving the concept plan for the placement of the proposed circle of sales structure in the Crawford Street Roundabout. Members of council, tonight, these eight CMRs that are before you totaled an amount of $1,372, $369 in grants and funds that are coming into our city.
And you have a report back, too?
I have, um-
Well, first, before we leave the agenda, we had a good discussion last night about the public hearing on the T-Mobile conditional use request, and it was the consensus that we would continue with the public hearing, would open it, and then that process, I'll ask the city clerk to read the caption, and then defer to the city manager, and she'll ask the Director of Planning to come up, and after that, the applicant has been told, asked to be here, and then after the applicant finishes off that briefing, open the public hearing, and we got correspondence today from the city attorney. I'll continue the public hearing and then entertain a motion to con-
I'll continue the public hearing and then entertain a motion to continue the matter to the August eighth meeting. Is that agreeable with everybody?
Yes.
Okay. Just want to make sure that, and is that consistent with the guidance that you've given us?
Yes.
All right.
All right, before you counsel, there are a few report backs. There was a question made last night on what are the parking regulations for religious institutions, Dr. Whitaker and counsel, we provided that information. Also, you have an attachment, which is an update on the Violence and Crime Initiative, and also the City Council Poverty Task Force.
Thank you.
That concludes our presentations.
All right, City Council liaison reports, and we'll start with Elizabeth. Does anyone have a report?
I, I do not. Two of my meetings did not happen this afternoon.
Do not have any?
I haven't met since the last meeting.
Okay.
No new meetings?
I do have, I do have, I just, I just noticed the language here on the ordinance that I asked about last meeting.
Okay. Go ahead and do that, and I do have something to report on liaison, so.
I just want to ask the city manager, or Mr. Ball, the change, it says, under the current ordinance, one parking space per sit, seat, six seats and worship area, one space per sixty-five square feet. How does that, how does that impact the present arrangement?
Based on the review we were performing, and these, these can vary depending on the seating capacity for any particular religious institution, but the, the initial calculation we did would lower the, the parking requirement. We're still looking at all of those numbers during this open process we're in until we finish putting the code amendment together. Following last night's conversation, we've elected to go back and take a look at some of our existing site plans for some projects we're proving, and verify our initial analysis to make sure that's a fact of case. If not, we would come back and propose a modification, again, using that square footage, which is an easier to calculate parking requirement than using, you know, parking based on seating capacity, which is much more fluid inside of a building, depending how you set up your seating. One of the things we're trying to do is give a, a constant way to calculate the parking. So that was the, the initial analysis. We want to go back and verify that during this next, you know, thirty to forty-five days and make sure that that, in fact, was accurate.
And does this, does the appeal process, I know you mentioned that you noticed there were no appeal-
That's correct.
Well, that's now included with-
That would be exactly. So if someone came in and, for whatever reason, let's say, for example, you have a ravine and your parking lot can't extend over the ravine, that's certainly a normal reason. You go to the Board of Zone Appeals and ask for parking relief because you couldn't construct. Under the current code, you do not have the option to do that. So we will again go back and verify that, a number to make sure it's accurate. That's the way that works. That's trying to give us a, a clear number that people, we don't end up in these debates over seating capacity, which, you know, obviously that can vary depending whether they're fixed seats, portable seats, all those kind of things, which have made establishing parking requirements in a lot of these institutions kind of complicated and sometimes fluid. So we were trying to come up with a standard, and so we will go back and double-check that. But the expectation is it would overall lower the parking requirement. We'll verify that for you, though.
Follow-up. Does the current patch cover any parking issues?
Current patch for the D-two district?
Yes.
It would. In fact, it covers pretty much anything regulated in that D-two district is-
I thought that was-
Subject to the patch via use permit.
All right.
And of course, there's a temporary until we get appropriate zoning in place. One thing I mentioned last night as well, we did move the D-two zoning ordinance parking into the main proposed modification. The expectation is once we figure out what the zoning is, that will be modified again because obviously what's in there now is still based off the existing Form-based Code land use, and, you know, we'll have to correct that once we have, we're placing zoning for that. But yes, the patch, you can address all of those issues with the modification that you made in that code amendment.
Thank you.
Just one more, and your square foot calculation here, does that include height or?
It's just floor.
This floor.
Floor square footage.
Okay.
And if, you know, if you have any questions, let us know. If you would like us to check any particular facilities you think might be appropriate. We definitely are trying to get the numbers right, and we, that's one of the reasons we want to have this open timeframe here, so if anybody, you know, can take a look at what's being proposed, run it against whatever use you're looking at and think there's something, it'd like us to take another look at, we're trying to fine-tune it as best we can. I'll make one other comment on that. Again, with the zoning ordinance being updated, you know, again, over the next, you know, year, year and a half, we'll come back to the parking again. So we have another chance to go back and fine-tune anything we've discovered over that period of time that might need to get, get tweaked. So it's sort of an open process to keep trying to fine-tune these numbers to make sure they're where City Council wants them to be.
My report is a, a briefing and tour that the city manager and her key staff and I got on the Naval Fuel Depot in West Offick and Churchland. And I think it's important, this was not just a, a tour, it was a strategic briefing. That facility supplies thirty-four percent of all the fuel for the Department of Defense, so it has a very, very strategic value. They're close in Yorktown and moving the Yorktown fuel over here, and it supplies fuel to the Navy, the Marines, the Air Force, the Army, and the Coast Guard. And it acts like a gas station, it sells the fuel, so it acts much like our utility system. They get, they get revenue when they sell the fuel to the Navy. They're very much concerned about the construction of the connector if, if the third crossing, Patriots Crossing, that comes off of six sixty-four and goes across the north end of Crane Island, and then dips under the Elizabeth River and pops up over in Offick. The plan is to connect that crossing to one sixty-four. And the knee-jerk reaction is that, yeah, that makes sense. But in order to do that, it would have to cross their property and cross our landfill, and it could have a big impact on, on both. And so it was good for the city manager and her staff to, to put that in perspective. And I think that maybe we ought to have something similar because this is a big deal, and it's a big deal for the country, but it's also a big deal for, for us, too. And if there's a connector, the connector, if there is an eastward expansion of Crane Island for the port, that road doesn't necessarily have to come all the way down to one sixty-four. But if they start trying to move it, you go through neighborhoods, I mean, it's just, it's not, it's not something that we ought to just go to sleep on. So is it, are you all interested in getting a similar briefing on this?
Yes.
Yes.
I had no idea.
Pardon me? Yeah, it is, it's incredible. All right, this brings us to the clo, my, end of our meeting, and there's no closed session, so we're adjourned. Let's eat and reconvene and stuff.